On to item 70. Report on the status of adopting a global plan for the probation department's halls and camps, which was held by Supervisor Horvath. Item 71, report on the status of the probation department, which was held by Supervisor Barker. And item 72, report on alternative housing for pregnant justice-involved youth, which was held for report. For members of the public joining us remotely to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature if you're online, or press star three if on the telephone. Representatives from the probation department will make a presentation, and other departments are available for questions. For the departmental speakers, please state your name and title for the record when you address the board.
Okay, what we'll do is, I know Supervisor Horvath held the item as well. We'll let you all give your presentation, and then I'll call in Supervisor Horvath.
Good afternoon. I'm Gier Moviera, the county's probation officer. I'm going to give a brief update on the depopulation plan in particular. I just want to be clear and remind folks that we're in the midst of two court cases, one of them that continues this Friday, which is a challenge from the California Department of Justice seeking receivership, and the other is in the Superior Court with respect to Los Padreinos and a depopulation plan that was approved. So I'll try to give a general update, answer your questions, and if there are some things that have to reserve for those cases, I'll turn to County Council to sort of guide us with respect to that. The depopulation plan, just as a reminder for folks, really was predicated on an understanding that utilizing the existing facilities that we have to separate specific populations would both assist in us better utilizing the staff that we have and putting us in a position where we could provide-
Can you hold on, Gier? Will people in the audience please be respectful? Thank you.
And the idea that by having specific populations in different facilities, we would be able to better serve them by having either specialized training for staff, or the services, the programming that we have, we'd be in a better position to provide those. So at the core of the plan was vacating Campus Kilpatrick, which is in Malibu, in order to make some physical modifications and seek approval from the Board of State and Committee Corrections to utilize that as our sole campus for the girls that we had separated between various facilities. That has already begun, and as of yesterday, and my colleagues here may have some updated information, as of yesterday, we had 16 that had been moved, not all at once, but in different groups over the course of the last few weeks. And there's, so it's up and running with 15 girls. We have full probation services there. There's already been visiting that has taken place over the weekend with families moving up there. The idea is to continue that move. We still have, I think, about 10 other girls left at Los Padreinos. So the next part of the depopulation plan would require the move of those girls there. And still at Dorothy Kirby, there's still another group. So this phase of the depopulation plan is the move of those girls along with the staff to Kilpatrick. The move to utilize one of the buildings at Ny Dorf to house, to use as a juvenile hall for those that are on SYTF track has already taken place. There's about 33 young boys there, and we think that that will stabilize. And at any given time, that's about how many will be housed there, in the 30s. The next portion after the move of the girls is finalized will be to more fully utilize Kirby and the City of Commerce, so that we can alleviate some of Los Padreinos with some of the more high-needs or developmentally-disabled boys to move to that facility. After doing all of that, and I failed to mention the way that we're using the East camps, which is moving those that have a camp order as quickly as possible, so that they're not at Los Padreinos for their assessment. After all that is done, we think here, by the end of the year, that Los Padreinos should be down to the 200, 205 mark, which puts us at a much better place to be able to meet staffing requirements and provide better services. That's where we are in terms of those moves, and we can answer much more specific questions that I know the supervisors have.
Okay, thank you for that. I want to start with the pregnant youth. Can you give us an update as to what's going on with them? Are they still in our custody? Are they moving? What's the status and where are they?
Yeah, good afternoon, Supervisors. Acting Chief Deputy Robert Arcos. The update on the pregnant youth, one of our girls was placed, was placed last week, and we have one remaining who has a pending court date for November 25th.
Placed means what?
Community placement. She went to Mary's Path.
Thank you.
And the second remains again on court, on a court date for November 25th, and we are working very diligently with our partners in the court on that to get her placed as well before that date, or on that date, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And I know it was a significant effort, also involving the Public Defender's Office, the District Attorney's Office, the courts, and probation. So thank you for making that happen and, you know, help us and the public understand what those efforts look like, so we can, you know, have an appreciation for what's gone on. You know, I know that the effort that all of our county stakeholders invest in getting our youth to alternative placements as they deal with very significant personal issues, as well as the medical issues, of course, associated with pregnancy, being in our justice system, all of that is very complicated. So I'm glad to hear that that's the case. It's my understanding also that the staff at Kilpatrick do not have OC spray. Is that right?
That's correct.
I'm glad to hear we're moving in that direction as well. I know that's been a standard of this board, and I'm glad to hear that that's what's going on there as well. And, you know, I want to thank our probation staff who have found a path to conflict resolution without OC spray. I know that's sort of a floor, but I think, you know, acknowledging that we're making progress is important where we are, and so I do want to acknowledge that. For Campus Kilpatrick, can any of you, or maybe this is for Dr. Galley, give us an update on the effort to get to 24/7 nursing staffing?
Thank you, and good afternoon, Supervisors. We currently have staff, two nurses per shift in the day shift and the evening shift, and we have one onboarded nurse in the night shift. We just need to onboard a second nurse. We had a second nurse through registry that was lined up, but unfortunately, the individual changed their mind and declined the position. So we are starting again to try to onboard a different nurse, either through registry or through county employment, and as soon as we are able to do that, which we're hoping still to be able to do by early December, those two nurses per shift for each of the three shifts will allow us to have the necessary 24/7 coverage that we're seeking.
And by when? I missed what you said.
Hopefully by early December.
Okay. And can you tell us about the programming that's being provided at Kilpatrick, and how does it compare to what was going on at LP?
Thank you, Supervisor. This is Sheila Williams, Chief Deputy of Administration for the Probation Department. At Kilpatrick, we have set aside or developed 21 programs. Gender expansive programming was implemented via ADAP, a CBO. Most of our existing contracts have been expanded rather than being newly created, ensuring that services continued at both LP and CVK. Some contracts were established directly with the department, while others were facilitated through a third-party agreement with either D Y D and/or Arts and Culture. Currently, we have approximately 21 confirmed programs. 16 have been fully executed, with five are still pending, and this also includes groups led by Sapsi and DMH. The programings that we currently have is 1 million littles. They're going to do creative arts, pillows, crochet, purses, bracelets, designed tennis shoes. There's a DJ program. They'll do visual arts, singing, dancing. This was responsive to the youth interests. There's Wonder C. That's a virtual headset, life coach, video games, and journaling, designed specifically for the CVK youth population. We have Young Women's Freedom Center. That's our Credible Messenger program, and they're going to go to court, and they have lived experience, and they will be onsite from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We have Beloved, a mentoring CSEC youth program for intake and assistance with diversion. We have Theater of Arts, an arts program, healing through performing and arts and poetry. We have our Ending Girls Incarceration Diversion Program. DMH is going to assist with gardening, yoga, and parenting. We have Diversity Hair Care. It's in response to the girls asking for cosmetology training. Hoops for Justice is going to be onsite. Their contract is pending. We have esthetician training, and that's for the girls to learn how to do eyebrows and lashes. We have a CNA program for nursing. We're looking at creating an all-female soccer program to be stood up next year, an all-female dog program to be stood up next year. We have Michael's Daughter. They're going to learn film animation, podcasting, three short films, public and private screenings. We are continuing with the Inner City Youth Orchestra. That's a program that's currently over at Barry J. Naidoff that we're bringing to CVK, which was sponsored by SD2. They are going to learn drum training program, and they're going to have concerts with families. We have the Right Girls. We have the Actors Gang, and we have the Asian Youth Center to help with conflict resolution. We have the Asian AM Drug Program. We have Faith, and we have Heidi Dekler Dance. And then, of course, probation and DMH will continue to do AM and PM, DBT sessions with the girls.
Thank you. I think that's the most robust accounting we've heard of what programming is available. And how are you, I know that our last conversation, there was sort of an indication between what is sort of on paper available and in practice. How are we making sure that it isn't available in practice? And how are we evaluating success? How do you determine success for these programs?
So each of these programs are actually contracts. And so if the services are not being rendered per the terms of the contracts, then we will obviously seek to do whatever we can in terms of what's allowable under the terms of the contract, including cancellation if need be. But then, of course, that would mean that that would reduce the number of programs that we do have available until we can onboard a new contract to take that place. We also, back in March of 2024, developed a notice to all our CBOs as well as county partners about our expectations for service delivery, the expectation for them to arrive on time, not have cancellations, and make sure that they do complete a one hour of programming as required under BSCC. And then we also reminded them of the security measures that we have put into place, because we do know that some of them are running into some difficulties with respect to getting onsite, going through the screening process. We also informed them that they can't be onsite more than 20 minutes prior to their programming beginning, and that they can't roam the facilities and those things of that nature. But to ensure that the contract is actually being implemented as per the terms of the contract, we have our contracting monitoring division that should be going out and making sure that whatever the terms of the contract are, that they're actually being implemented. And then, of course, we would need to, because I don't think we have this currently, develop some sort of quality assurance program, because we need to make sure that whatever service or program that is being provided, that it is making some sort of measurable difference in the young person's life.
See, that last part, I think, is really what I'm trying to get at. So you have a metric, you don't have a metric yet for, it sounds like you're evaluating if they show up and they're doing what they say they're going to do per the contract, but we don't have a qualitative assessment?
So when the chief and I first arrived at probation, one of the things that we consistently heard was there was a lack of programming. So our first goal was to get a sufficient number of programs onboard.
Right.
And then the second phase would be that QA piece. And so that's the part that we're going to start working on now.
Okay. And what about Barry J.? Same question for Barry J.
And Supervisor, thank you for the opportunity, because I want to highlight what you said, which was, the next phase here is for us to determine whether the right programs are having the intended effect. That's something the probation has as a next step, which, right now, it's a best guess, right? It's about, is it something the kids are interested in? Is it our best guess with respect to the information we have in their case file and conversations? But we really can't tell you whether these programs are having a significant effect in future behavior or recidivism, and that's definitely the next step. And we owe that to know whether the dollar is going to the right place, and whether that's how we prevent from kids continuing in the system, right? And that's not developed quite-
And there was also concern, too, that with Kilpatrick being so far away, that we wouldn't be able to get a diversity of programs out there. So it's helpful to hear what is already underway, happening at that location. But on to Barry J.
So for Barry J. Naidoff, if you recall, Barry J. and Central were found unsuitable for the housing at predispo. After that, they all got moved to, over to Los Padreinos, and then, of course, we heard the concerns raised about a lack of programming. So in response to that, we asked staff to provide us what is the current list of programs that they had available at each of the site. And so for Barry J. Naidoff, there were a total of 11 programs when the chief and I arrived there. Currently now, we have 28 different program services and activities, and we're working on the following. We also offer two paid work initiatives, developed by, one developed by Barry J. Naidoff, and the other in collaboration with Bull Heights Arts Conservatory Mural Program. Additionally, Jail Guitar Doors is finalizing a rap workforce program through Arts and Culture specifically for Barry J. Naidoff. We recently completed the five contracts for PV Jobs, K9 Hub, Game Changers, and Free to Dream Institute, with features of full music studio. We expanded the number of programs and sessions available through either D Y D and Arts and Culture. Efforts are underway to establish a culinary program and a certified barbing program. And of course, DBT sessions are held every Wednesday as a multidisciplinary effort between DMH probation and the Credible Messengers. And of course, Tarzana provides daily onsite drug treatment services. And if you recall, there was a recent motion for us to expand those services and enhance those that are currently being offered, as well as to make sure they're available within all the institutions. We recently just wrapped up two initiatives that took about a year to come into fruition, and that is the Teen Tech Center, and this is in collaboration with Best Buy, the Annenberg Foundation, and the Greater L.A. Education Foundation. This will create a meaningful, hands-on opportunity for system-involved youth. The Teen Tech Center will provide youth with learning experience in computer programming, filmmaking, music production, design, and other creative technologies. Participants will gain mentorship, engaging project-based learning, and access to energy-standard tools, preparing them for future careers, where fostering creativity, confidence, and positive engagement. We also just finished a workforce development initiative in April of 2025 with the department, the Amity Foundation, and the Office of OYCR. This initiative connects justice-involved youth with disabilities, ages 14 to 25, with education, employment preparation, and individualized support services. Since execution, a workforce navigator and a project coordinator have been hired. A launch meeting was held on October 10th, and it was hosted by representatives from probation, OYCR, and Amity Foundation. We continue to hold incident-free and special events for the population of Barry J. Naidoff, and a list that was shared with your staff back on October 2nd was, one, on October 11th, we had the Hoops for Justice Basketball Tournament for the predispo youth only. On October 24th, we had a sip and paint using apple cider for incident-free youth, and a guest was able to join them. November 22nd, we'll have our Inner City Youth Orchestra Concert, which I believe some of the supervisors will be participating in. 25 youth will be participating in that program. We initially had something scheduled for the week of Thanksgiving, but that contract with that vendor has been terminated. And on December 13th, ADVOC Community will do a community event for our predispo youth. And on December 20th, we're going to have a Winter Wonderland program for our youth.
I think that's incredibly helpful to hear what is happening there. Have you experienced any obstacles that remain in place to, that prevent us being able to speed up programming or availability at Barry J.?
Now, with respect to the contracting process, so if you recall, countywide, the contract process usually involves some sort of solicitation, which can take up to a year, to a year and a half, just to complete a solicitation for one service. We were able, through the depopulation plan and prior to, we've set up approximately 80 new program services and programs throughout the three facilities with CVK, Barry J., as well as 43 additional ones at LP.
Fantastic. How is staffing going at Barry J.?
So we're meeting our staffing requirements in all of our facilities, shift on shift. I just want to, I don't want to lose the thread with respect to programming. This is a representation of what's underway and what we have. I wouldn't want the board or anyone else to think that we think we're done. Quite the opposite. We think that this is a beginning, and that if there are any folks that believe that they could provide services, that please contact us. We are always on the lookout for those that want to interact with our youth and provide meaningful services. And given the fact that we have a changing population, or with this restructure in the different locations, we especially want folks that have a special interest or a special program for that population. This is the floor for us. We continue to be open, and as we move into the next part, which is fidelity to what the contract is for, and then the actual impact that it has on the youth, we think that this is just the beginning.
Yeah, and it's helpful to hear who those partners are, because I know the contracts are a big way programming is provided, and, you know, hopefully we get to a place where that it's fewer contracts and more staff who are able to do that, but I know we're not there yet. And so, and so it's helpful to know who is in there, who's providing those services, and how you've had success in working with them. So thank you for that very complete list. How are we doing to make sure that our staff are continuing to support that effort? And have we, has Barry J. been approved by the BSCC for operating as a juvenile hall?
So we have inspection dates from BSCC with respect to the juvenile hall. Those are upcoming next month, and it's a series of dates. And so each one of the two locations has, we're sort of at different portions in that inspection process. So December, I don't want to be too specific on the dates, because I don't remember, but the juvenile hall portion inspections will take place.
Okay. And finally, are there any concrete steps or factors you can describe to help us understand the steps being taken to divert or decarcerate, so that there are fewer youth in custody? Given, I know that, you know, we are meeting our staffing requirements, but I think what we saw in our presentation at our last meeting was that staffing is, helping to increase staffing is challenging. And so we're not going to be able to staff our way with, you know, a huge influx of people out of any of the challenges that we've seen. So are we able to, are there any efforts ongoing for decarceration or depopulation that we should be aware of?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the, it's tough to figure out what the appropriate number for having totally housed is. It's more about a process of making sure that every individual has every opportunity to either go to a program when appropriate. The judges still need to make the decisions. I will say that, for example, with respect to the decarceration of the young girls in our system, look, we're talking about a county of 10 million and 40, around 46 that are in the system, and when you take a look at the number of how many opportunities for diversion, I'm using diversion really probably inappropriately. What I mean is after they're with probation, I mean, able to look for a least restricted environment. Those efforts continue. I don't know, in terms of keeping them out of the system, the role that probation is having is sufficient, to be quite honest. Most of the resources have really been surrounding once they're presented to us. It's still a minority of the cases that are filed in LA County. I think the number that I saw recently is, when we take a look at the out-of-custody submissions or referrals for crimes that take place on youth, it's much greater. So to some extent, we're already processing allegations of crimes by minors out of custody. I think the number for last year was something like 4,000 or more, in excess of 4,000 were processed, where they didn't even make it to juvenile hall. So when we talk about how many efforts are taking place, we probably should take into consideration that component, which is, we're already moving to a non-custodial processing of allegations. What we look forward to is really making sure that the time they spend with us is so meaningful, and it makes such connections that they don't come back. That's really where I think the gains are going to be made. Part of that is going to really involve our staff. The first component was getting staff to the facility, having enough staff so that we're not turning away vendors and programs that come in. The next step is making sure that we're part of a multidisciplinary team, that it's not that we just have probation officers providing security, that they're actually part of the team that's providing services. And that's traditional probation work, and that does take place by some of our best probation officers, where they're doing the actual programming from periods where there isn't anyone else there. That has to be the norm. The norm has to be, and really, it's a protection against not having enough staff and creating a positive culture, which is, I really shouldn't be able to distinguish in terms of the way that we interact with kids, if it's an employee from DMH, if it's a probation officer, if it's a vendor. It really should be this interdisciplinary team that's really tackling and keeping them engaged, and really working on, what do you want of your life? How can we help you get that? Because you're going to leave here. That's the challenge before us now. I feel confident that we're moving in that direction. If we just take a look at the initial steps, which are, do we have enough staff at the facility to start engaging in some of these? And I believe we do now. It comes at a tremendous cost at some of the other basic things that probation has to do. But that's a step one. This is where we are now. We have to continue hiring. We have to continue looking at different avenues and resources of bringing staff into work in probation. Now's the qualitative part. Now it's, okay, staff is there. How are we engaging with a young person? Are we making sure that they don't have idle time? Are we really reaching them where they are? That's the challenge before us now, and I, I don't feel confident in answering where we are there, but I, but that is sort of wrapping our values in our heads around what we're moving toward.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, Supervisor, you asked a lot of the questions that I was focused on, but while we're talking about programming, and I do appreciate this, because that was one of the areas that I think Sheila will recall I was the most frustrated with, because on paper, it says one thing, and then when you go out there, it's not necessarily, no, it's not even not necessarily, it was not taking place. And when I think about, you know, the programming component, we have an opportunity. I mean, these young people are going to be getting out. It's not a question of if it's when, and we have an obligation to do everything we can to provide them with all the tools necessary, so that they don't come back, right? Makes sense. I mean, you were law enforcement, that's what you'd want. You want them to go out and thrive. So while we're talking about programming, I mean, I know that Dr. Gerardo's here, education, and we had a motion today, but what are we doing on the educational component? Because when I hear, and I actually really grilled my staff, because when I hear that students who are not complying in classroom are suspended, I laugh, because, so what are you going to do? I mean, they're in a locked facility, they're suspended, ooh, send them back to their rooms so they can watch TV. It's counterintuitive to me to think that in a locked facility, that you are, that whomever, I don't know if it's Laco's, the teacher's making the call, I don't know. And again, I know we've got a motion on education, but I guess that programming is important from the standpoint of both physical, you know, getting out and running and whatever, music and all. But education for me is really important, especially when you think that education is probably one of the ways that you get people back on track. And so I guess I'd look to Dr. Gerardo in terms of her staffing. Yeah, I'd like to hear from you in terms of what is taking place on the education side, what courses are being provided, and just your overall thoughts on how we are doing, if you were to grade us, the county, in terms of education in our camps and our halls.
Well, we just had the release of the dashboard information, and we have seen progress in some areas and other areas where we need to make improvements. We certainly have an issue with negative behavior that's escalated. And I just had a conversation with the chief earlier today. What we are doing at Laco is we are looking at all of the data and analyzing when we see these increases in behaviors escalating, tiering it out. So we have tiers of conduct or behaviors that are unacceptable, anything from just a kid talking back, but to, all the way to a more third tier where they're more aggressive, a kid talking back, but to, all the way to a more third tier where they're more aggressive, where they're actually kicking, hitting, spitting, attacking. And really having to have, and I'm sorry, I'm a little bit upset, because I just got a report of one of our teachers being assaulted. And so, as we're trying to figure out every adult's role in the classroom, and I had just talked to the chief about it, what is the role of probation? What does it mean when we say, you know, to keep, to maintain safety? What does it mean for the paraprofessional in the classroom? And what's their role? What's the teacher's role? What's the credible messenger's role? So, we have a lot of adults in the classrooms, and what I'm asking is for a comprehensive plan about what everyone's role and responsibility is, and how are we engaging students? We know that, you know, when we have high-quality, good instruction and engaged students, they behave better. But we also know that these are students who've experienced a lot of trauma, they've been separated from their families, they have things that trigger them. There are issues that come when students come to school first thing in the morning, where they're not prepared and ready to learn. If they're half-dressed, or if they're coming to school with food from breakfast, there are a lot of things that we're looking at. So, right now, we're in the process of disaggregating the data, coming up with a tiered approach on addressing discipline. We certainly cannot have our teachers assaulted.
Can I interject something? Because you reminded me of something that I think you and I talked about in terms of kids getting ready to go to school and how they dress when they go to school. Have you brought forward any recommendations on, and I hate to use the word "uniform," but, uniform of sort for kids so that when they go to school, they're dressed different than having the, no offense to probation, but to me, the clothes that are really, to me, very institutional?
Yes. This has been a concern of ours for a while. We don't want to see students in outfits that look like they're prisoners. We want them, when they come to school, to have a polo shirt on, to have a uniform. It took us about a year to get that approved last year at LP with probation, and we're seeing students that aren't coming to school with a green polo. The students pick the color, they design, design the motto, the logo. But we are seeing where students are coming to school not wearing the uniform. We're also concerned when we see students that come to school in their orange jumpsuits when they're going to go to court, because it lets the whole class know, and it kind of triggers them, like, oh, it's your court date. So, those are all things that we have been trying to address and wanting to make sure that when students come to school, they come dressed appropriately, fully dressed, no clothes, no cards, no food.
Just to interrupt, they get suspended for not wearing the uniform? Is that what you just said?
No.
No. Okay.
No. We would never suspend.
Okay. I thought we were talking about suspended.
No, but, Guillermo, are they mandated to go to court wearing an orange jumpsuit? Or if they were in their uniform, could they go to court? No?
No, that would, no. You would not be transported to court or off property. And maybe it's an offline conversation on the security protocol and why that is, but I, if I could just jump on this, what I was mentioning before on the next step is really figuring out, and I hope Dr. Eduardo doesn't disagree with this, which is the interdisciplinary approach. I think the worst thing that we could do is essentially say, look, probation, security, and then from this point forward, it's Laco, or probation does this, and from this point forward, it's the MH. Those are exactly the type of things that are a disservice for our kids. So that when we talk about what happens in the classroom, and I'm going on a little bit of a limb here, especially with my own probation folks, it continues to be the responsibility of the entire team to create an environment that's conducive for learning.
And to that point, I have to wonder when, and I know that my colleagues have also experienced going into Berry Nidoff, SYTF, or even LP, the unit where the LP youth have been transferred. And when you're with a credible messenger, there's no harm, no foul. I mean, the probation staff sits back, and the youth respond in a very positive way. So, I have to wonder if there's an opportunity, because they have a relationship with those youth, the credible messengers have a relationship. I have to wonder if we need to start thinking about that as a way to work with these kids, because they're acting out for a reason.
They are. I concur in the sense that, and I know I keep going back to this, and at some point you're going to tell me to be quiet, but it's the, it's the full team functioning as one. For example, in an LP, they are in the classroom. And so, the very period in which we are talking about these failures, it's a joint failure. It includes DYD, it includes Laco, it includes us. So, what I'm suggesting is that the path forward is, rather than these silos, it's that, that whole team's joint ownership of what happens in that environment, and I don't think the directors will disagree, is probably our next step to get together and figure that out, rather than say, there's a failure on this entity or the other. Because, remember, most of these kids, or many of them, were already failing the traditional educational environment. Then we're putting them in an even more stressed environment. And so, this is going to take every adult in that room, getting them to a place where learning can take place.
So, in knowing that, back to you, Dr. Gerardo, when we know, do we get access to their educational records while they're under our care, our custody?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Do we get their educational records while they're, in other words, if my child's there and has dyslexia?
Yes.
And I know my child's not going to tell you that he has dyslexia. Do you, are you notified by the school, wherever they came from, that they have dyslexia?
That's part of the intake process. So, as soon as the student is enrolled, we reach out to the previous district of enrollment to access their records. So, they don't come to us with their records, but as soon as we enroll them, it's the first thing we do is seek out their records to understand if they're, it's a student in special ed, or if they have specific, you know, educational needs.
So, if I were to ask you to provide for the last six months, the educational records, success of getting those, that information, would it be 90%, 100%? Do all, do all school districts comply?
I'd say it's about 90%, yes. Once we seek out, we have counselors that are working specifically with the district to get the information. But I also want you to know, even when we get that information, placement in the classroom is not based on the educational background or need of the student. Probation places student in the classroom based on safety needs.
How, can you merge those two? I mean, because that seems counter, I keep using the word "counterintuitive," because there's a lot I'm hearing today that's counterintuitive. That seems very counterintuitive to me, quite frankly. So, what, what is being done to try to figure out a middle ground to address the reasons why probation is doing that and putting the needs of the educational needs of the child first?
Yeah. So, I've explained this to the chief, and he's talked about more shared decision-making and working towards that. However, we're not there yet.
Okay. And then, in closing, because I know my colleagues wanted to discuss this, I will say this, and we've talked about this. A young man who now I'm proud to say SYTF is out and is doing extremely well, in spite of, in spite of being at Berry Nidoff. But the comment that he made to me that stuck with me, and I think I've said this to you, Dr. Gerardo, is that he would go to class, and the teacher was so obviously afraid of him, that it was, he felt uncomfortable, because there was this automatic barrier up, because a teacher obviously was not comfortable being there in the room. And his comment to me was, how can you expect people to learn when the people that are supposed to teach him won't look them in the eye, are putting up barriers and guards because it's obvious that they're just doing it to get through, to get to the end of the class or the day? And when you and I talked, you said that they were going to implement, you were going to implement maybe better training first for teachers. I've heard it again, and based on what happened there with the assault, I can understand that kind of information to teachers makes them put up barriers. But I have to wonder, it's going to take a special person to want to go in and teach in this environment. But I hope the teachers recognize that body language speaks volumes, and that these kids, quite frankly, have been through a lot and also put up barriers for their own protection, and that there's got to be a give and take on both sides. And that doesn't mean that assaults on teachers is acceptable. It is not. We need to do a better job of making sure that our teachers have the protection that they deserve. But we also need to recognize that, even though these youth think they're adults, they're still kids. And they are there for a reason, and they are not out in public right now for a reason. So, we need to really holistically think about how we are going to talk about, we talk about programming, we talk about, you know, the mental health, substance abuse, and then education. I think that we need to really holistically look at this and recognize that mental health's going to play a key role, because the young man I talked about witnessed his father die right in front of him, shot at six years old. That is trauma.
Absolutely.
So, I think we need to look holistically at each one of these youth, not as just another person that's been sentenced and is doing their time. We need to look and try to really address some of the root causes, but also how we can, as a system, provide that support. And for our staff, too. And I really want, because I know I'd be upset if my staff were assaulted. So, I understand that side of it, but I think there has to be a checks and balance.
Absolutely. And we continue to train on trauma-informed care and ensuring that our teachers and all staff understand the circumstances and the systems that have failed our students, you know, from early on, and what we need to do to improve that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gerardo. Supervisor Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we have a lot of items on this agenda about probation, some that we dropped our holds on, and some that we're trying to talk about altogether here. But I just wanted to start off, I do know that the common theme here today is programming in our facilities. And, you know, I, sorry, but it just doesn't jive for me, listening about all the programming. We heard some about the arts programming. It's just not jiving with, when I go out there, or when we talk to the young people who are just, there's nothing to do. I mean, and to be honest with you, even two hours a day of programming is not that much in a full day. That's a lot of hours that, you know, they're not doing anything. So, any way that we can continue to lean in, and I know you want to, and you've talked a lot about it, and I'm all there, but it just doesn't jive when I hear, hear you talking about it. And then my experience, and then, and talking to the young people, it just doesn't jive. They're always, when you show up, it's one of the first things they grab you and want to tell you, is there just is nothing for them to do. And I see it, I mean, I see them just sitting there, you know, playing video games or watching TV. So, something is a disconnect, and I don't know what that is. And I was just going to lean in on Hoops for Justice, and I think you did tell me, Guillermo, that they had been approved to go to Berry J, but they didn't have a contract yet. But then we heard that they were approved to just go as visitors? Is that true? Or are they actually continuing their programming? Do you know?
Supervisor, Hoops for Justice has an existing contract that takes them all the way through 2026. They've been approved to do special events over at Berry J Nidoff. And as mentioned, they had one on...
So, special events, that feels different than their usual.
Yeah. So, they did a special event, I believe, on October 11th. Hoops for Justice did a basketball tournament with the pre-disciple youth only. They're scheduled to do some work over at CVK, but they already have an existing contract that takes them through 2026 for LP.
Yeah, it was my understanding that that didn't transfer to Berry J.
No, it did not. They have an existing contract at LP.
I know that. I think the issue was getting them, because a lot of our LP population is now...
No, their contract is on hold until after the depopulation plan is, has been completed.
Say that again?
Their contract is on hold. The expansion of their contract is on hold until after the depopulation plan is completed. Contracts are based on location, and they're based on the number of youth to be serviced. And once the, once the depopulation plan has been completed, we can determine the number of youth that would be available to be serviced by their contract. We are working on a contract with them for CBK. They have an existing contract at LP that takes them through 2026.
No, I got that. I got the LP one.
But they do not have a contract at Berry J.
I mean, I think I would just ask it again, to not wait till the depopulation plan has been implemented, because I do know that, again, as Supervisor Barker said, these have been credible messengers that really have gained the trust of the young people. And, you know, as we've talked before, anytime we transfer large populations around to different facilities, it's a little unnerving and a little disconcerting. And so, to keep that continuity of a credible messenger is something I would still ask for again. And so, maybe, Guillermo, you can just look into that and see if you can't extend that contract. If you need help from the board, if we need to, you know, do some emergency thing, I would appreciate it.
I will. And I think that the disconnect is, as of today, if they want to go do something for that population, they can. I have approved that. What, I think where we're getting a little bit mixed up is that it's the same number of kids, and it's not an expansion, meaning they can't keep all of the money in one location for less clients and then have an additional one. The numbers don't jive up, so I think that's where we're getting disconnected, which is...
It also seems like we're disconnected on what they can provide at Berry J.
It sounds like, I will follow up on that.
Is it just a special event? Or is it a continuation of the programming?
I got you.
So, let's just look into that. And then, Sheila, I think I heard you talk about the music studio as one of the programs. And I was surprised to hear that, because we've been checking in on that, and it hasn't been open, it hasn't been up and running.
The music studio that I referenced is at Berry J is the Best Buy Team Center. The music studio for LP with 1,500 Academy is still underway. It's under construction.
Okay. All right. Because I think those would be great additions for the young people. I was also going to ask about the plan to move the developmentally disabled boys to Dorothy Kirby. And just going to ask, is that on top of the population that's already at Dorothy Kirby?
It would essentially be as the, as the girls move out, it allows more room so that we increase that population there. So, the population that's already identified to be there stays, it just gives us more beds because we know we have more demand.
Right. I will say, when I went out to visit there, I was very impressed with the staff and their collegiality with each other and with the young people. It really was impressive. It was a different vibe there with the staff than I've seen at some of the other facilities. I mean, they also do on their own special events and special meals, and they like to celebrate different holidays throughout the year. So, I just hope that we can give them the support they need as this population is really dramatically going to change for them.
Absolutely. And I think that's the strength of this, which is essentially, we know that we have staff that is committed in particular areas, and they really have it on their heart to service that population, and I hope that this can allow for that. But I wanted to just address, because you've mentioned something incredibly important, Supervisor Hahn, which is essentially, we're reporting what the contracts are and that are underway. And you're asking, or you're essentially saying, look, I've got a litmus test, which is me, and when I go, this doesn't appear to be so. And I think you're right to bring that to our attention, and we're probably due for an overall audit between the departments onto what's actually happening and for the fidelity in those contracts. So, I think we'll take that as a, sort of an urge to say, let's make sure that these things we're reporting.
And I would lean into the auditor controller, who is doing the audit of the programming and is still looking for some documentation just to...
No, and we don't have a lack of folks doing independent audits, like, for example, POC just recently went out, but I... But I think it's incumbent upon, we'll take you up on it, us to just say, "Look, let's make sure that on an ongoing basis." So yes.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And my last question is about, so I went and visited Berry J. a couple Saturdays ago, and many of the youth who are enrolled in the college program, they're only allowed to go once a week. And as we were saying, it is the key to them, probably, when they finally are released, to really setting them on a pathway to a career. And there's such a hunger for them going to school, going to class, but they were only allowed, one of them told me, they were only allowed to go once a week. And he was wondering if they could go more to classes for college.
Supervisor, do you mind? We have Dr. Corral, who's in charge of our education services, to answer that. Is that an appropriate addition?
Like I would say, why don't they get to go every day to college class if there's nothing else going on? Even if there is, you're right.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Jesus Corral, Senior Director over Probation Education Services and now over Programming as well.
Oh, boy. Is that seat hot enough for you? So I was, I'd been out visiting at Berry J., and one of the young men who had just come from LP, and I've been very impressed at LP, they were doing classes with Cerritos College. And I guess at Berry J., they're now doing classes at Mission College. But this one young man, who's really turned his life around and is really on the right path, was questioning why they couldn't go more to college classes than just once a week.
Thank you for your question, Supervisor. Now, I can't speak to this one particular young man because I don't know what classes that young man is enrolled in. But what I can say is that at Berry J. Nidof, we have a robust college program with our partner, Mission College, where we have young people, we have dedicated space there where young people go and attend college.
I was there, I was there.
They go, we have the bungalows back by the pool area.
I was there.
And the young people go to the, we have a schedule in which young people are transported there. And that model's been working well, primarily because it takes young people out of the dorms where there's other distractions.
I know, that's great. The only question is, this young man just wanted me to find out, yeah, every time I go out there, I get assignments from those that we care for, but why can't he go more than once a week?
At Berry J., one of the issues that we have is that we do have different populations that oftentimes cannot mix. And so what happens is, we have to schedule different times for the young people to go and attend college programming. And so if you share this young man's name offline, I'd be happy to follow up. But what I can say is that through our efforts and through our amazing partner, Mission College there at Berry J. Nidof, we've had quite a bit of success. In fact, we've had, I believe it's 19 young people earn an associate's degree.
Right.
We've had quite a few of those, I believe 17 of those have gone on to college after they transitioned home. And so we've had quite a bit of success. We offer both in-person classes. We were recently offering statistics, we offered English classes in person, and then we offer a, we actually have access to the entire mission catalog of online classes as well. So young people there do have access to the programs. We agree, I mean, in terms of...
And could you just look into that for me?
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't know if it's just this young man, but I'm sure it might be a common request to let them go more. And by the way, the staff that staffed the bungalows, the proctors kind of are fantastic. They have been with the department for a long time, and they have a real love and concern for these young people and helping them to get the education that they deserve.
No, we certainly appreciate that. Those are all probation...
I mean, when was the last time we had heard anybody say they wanted to go to school more? So I just think we ought to capitalize on that.
And those young people are, I'm sorry, those adults that are supporting the young people are probation employees.
I know.
And I agree with you, they're dedicated, many of them have been with the department for many years. And I can tell you that you can go visit anytime, talk to them, and they'll be able to tell you which classes each young person's enrolled in, what their courses are, what their pathway toward graduation or a certificate is. We also are very fortunate to have college counselors go there on campus at Berry J. Nidof and meet with each of the young people, both via Zoom and in person, to help the young people create an outline for themselves and their college journey.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor, and if you find it appropriate to forward the specific young man's name to Dr. Corral, we could... Okay.
Thank you. Supervisor Solis.
Yes, Dr. Corral, you know, you're sparking my interest on higher education because before my political career, I spent a lot of time helping youth prepare for college. And much of what took place was really talking to them through about the process, but more importantly, about financial aid and assistance. Because, in fact, many of our young people, including regular students, don't even have that information. So you talk very well about the program that's being offered now by Mission. We replicated that program in some way to offer it at LP and with any of our other campsites. Because, I mean, you can do this online, right? And I'm just wondering, have we done that beyond just Mission? Because Mission has their service district, so you have Cerritos College at LP, you've got a number of community colleges at our other camps. And has there been any discussion looking forward? Because I really do think that our kids can aspire to get vocational training, apprenticeship training, community colleges play a very key role, and can, in addition to our secondary schools. But is there any thought on that?
Absolutely, Supervisor. In fact, we worked very closely with Rising Scholars when the program was implemented a couple of years ago. And we have partners specifically assigned to each campus. So for Dorothy Kirby Center, our partners there are Trey Tech and East LA College. For our East camps, we work with Mount SAC and Citrus College. For Los Pedrinos, as you mentioned, we work with Cerritos. And for Campus Kilpatrick, we work with a combination of West LA College and Mission College, and then Berry J. Nidof is Mission College.
And are we keeping stats? Because again, it goes back to recidivism, and what is our success rate? And I'm sure they have information if the student continues to enroll. So it'd be easy to extrapolate that information and put together something and track ourselves. Who does, I mean, sometimes you can even get competitive with the community colleges because they want students.
That's a good point. I'll let Dr. Corral answer this, but more importantly, with respect to persistence, meaning how many of the kids are continuing with the class and competing, that's...
Yes, we absolutely keep stats. In fact, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that, working with our partners, we keep statistics on the grades earned, we keep statistics on how many young people have to drop a class. And we even have a process in place where if a young person transitions between facilities, like right now with the depopulation taking place at Los Pedrinos, we have processes in place so that if a young person, for example, starts a course at Los Pedrinos and then is transitioned over to Berry J., they're able to finish that course. And then, once the semester's over, they transition into the new program with the partner at the facility that they transitioned to.
And that's great. I'm really happy to hear that. And, you know, I can't forget the experience that I had, and I've said this a couple of times, at LP. In one classroom that I went to, there were maybe two or three instructors there. And Guillermo, you didn't go in that classroom with me. However, I was blown away by the students and the interaction with the teachers. One student, and I don't know where he's gone on to, but I'm pretty sure he's going on to an Ivy League school. He was so smart and so meticulous and was outstanding in terms of cybersecurity. He understood everything and computer, I mean, just blew people away. And their only ask was just to have more equipment made available. And I get it, you have to be careful what tools and what kinds of things are available. But in a situation like that, I think we want to encourage that kind of growth and use that as an example to show what can be transformational for these students and how their impact can help also serve as kind of a mentorship for other youth that are there. And I just saw that reflected in so many different ways. I even saw students painting a mural in the classroom, and other students were motivated to be rewarded to get into that class. So that's, I mean, to me, the theory behind that is giving them a chance and having them explore that, but giving them the opportunity, not just in one little cubicle, but expanding it further. So I don't know whatever happened, you know, with that classroom, but if I can, I'll go back again. Because you had some good instructors there, and that's also key, having a commitment on the part of the instructors, because you could really tell that they were engaged. And they even went into their own pockets, pocketbooks, to bring materials in. And I think I raised that, why couldn't we provide materials? Because they wanted to work on solar panels to heat the room. I'll never forget that story. I don't know if that ever happened, Guillermo, so maybe we need to go back on that. But that's just, I mean, I've been impressed with some things, but it just hasn't expanded. And I think those are the things that some of us want to hear and learn more about. And I equally want to say that it's important to engage the parents. When their child is successful, or maybe not successful, having that discussion with the parent or not just the immediate messenger that's there that's been with them, but also getting the family engaged in some way. Because eventually, they'll go back to the family, or the family will come visit them regularly. And I think parents, especially parents that may not have had formal education, really appreciate that something good is happening while they're in our care. And I kind of picked that up when I would go on some visits there and run into some parents. So I think that's very important, to be able to have that relationship. Okay? That's more of a comment. I did have a question with respect to healthcare, and I know Supervisor Horvath raised the issue about young pregnant women and healthcare overall and access. And I wanted to raise the attention of the staff because I know back in 2018, Supervisor Han actually joined me as a co-author on a motion where we actually required, back then, four services for pregnant, postpartum women and girls who are incarcerated. And at that time, back then, DHS reported, back in 2017, there were 1,039 girls in our care. Fifty of them at the time were pregnant, 50. We're nowhere near that now. However, there was, DHS reported that there was prenatal care that was provided at LAC USC. They had access to medical, dental, and mental health, and also received appropriate diets and offered parenting programs, family therapy, among other things. I would like to know where this is reflected in our policies for probation, if that has been noted. And if Dr. Galley, you could tell me where we are with that? If that continues, if this effort still continues based on that motion.
I'll look into the specifics of the motion. I haven't reviewed that motion in quite some time, so happy to get back to you on the specifics. Prenatal care is provided currently, right now, at LA General Medical Center. We are looking, just as the youth are potentially transitioned in the future to Camp Kilpatrick, about whether or not it might make more sense to transition that prenatal care to Olive View Medical Center. It's slightly closer, it's honestly not too much of a difference in terms of transport time, but it's possible it might make some more sense. And they receive comprehensive medical care as needed for their condition through either of those sites, whichever it is. But I'll have to get back to you about the specifics of the particular diet or programming and the most up-to-date policies in that regard.
Right. And I would, and I would just go further. I know on this memorandum that was shared with us on November the 18th of this year, I looked through it to see where there was a description, if any, on how we deal with housing medically fragile youth. And under there, it says codes for special handling, and you have one section at the end, the bullet says P., pregnant. Establish from the medical record, self-report, and subsequent medical findings. Parental interested party reporting the report or other reliable source establishes special needs, requirements, and possible precautionary measures. That's all it says in this directive. And so I really do think we need to have a better description and explanation of what it is we're obligated to provide, and whether that's through the department or whatever. But adoption, I think, should be clear. And perhaps going through these codes as well and assessing where we are to update them. Because I think that was just one item that caught my attention. And I know we're doing more, but it's not reflected.
We'll do that, Supervisor. And I think probably part of the disconnect is that's the policy for the probation staff. That certainly wouldn't cover sort of the medical procedure. But we'll go back and make sure that everything that was at initial motion is...
And my effort is really more just to be transparent. Because if we get asked about questions by, you know, the public or the press, where can I go to our handy policy that tells me, well, this is where it's at, and this is what the board has adopted? And, you know, that's all. And I realize this wasn't under your purview, but was something to think about, you know, going forward. So I would ask that. And then the last comment I have is about Dr. Dorado with respect to our teachers. I've heard that there have been assaults on teachers before. But do you think that, you know, what is missing here? Because you, you know, you've expressed great concern, and we have that concern, too, about staff. But what can we, what can we do? What can we learn from this?
Well, one, today's incident, there wasn't a probation officer in the classroom. So always making sure that we have a probation officer present in the classroom is critical. I think, again, it's all of us working together, every adult that's supporting the students that we serve, and making sure everybody understands their role and that it's everybody's role to engage, to build relationships, to interact with students. It's not a matter of coming into the classroom and sitting back and just watching as an observer, but really, everybody has a role in engaging with the students that we serve. So number one, I'd say making sure that in order for everybody to feel safe that there is a probation officer in the classroom, that when students come to school, they're not bringing food with them. Today's incident was students, and I've seen reports of this, bringing milk cartons into the classroom and then urinating in them, and then throwing them at teachers or at other adults. So that's one of the reasons when we say we don't want food in the classroom, there's a reason for it. So just making sure that we're following through with the policies that we have in place, so students come to school ready, prepared to learn without food or cards or games or anything else that can distract them, as well as all of us just coming together and really understanding what our role is. And from all of us, like I said, strong first, high-quality instruction, you know, credible messengers that have established relationships, that are working in the classrooms, encouraging students to participate, probation doing the same, our paraprofessionals doing the same, and really making sure we have a comprehensive plan on how we engage with our youth.
Thank you. Did you want to respond? No?
No, I, I, I sort of have this practice of not commenting before I get all the facts. What I can tell you is that, obviously horrified that a teacher was assaulted, the superintendent is now doing a review to ascertain the facts and to see how we can prevent this. What I will tell you is if, in fact, there wasn't a probation officer in the room, that concerns me. I know that we've had a practice in some locations in the past of posting the probation officers outside, some at the request of other departments because they wanted to have some. I don't support that, and we're certainly going to go back and make sure that, like Dr. Dorado described and I described earlier, that we're functioning as one team of adults providing an environment that's supportive for their education.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Solis, thank you for sharing those statistics. I think that we, the collective, we, the community, board, get so consumed in our work to try to make the system the best it can be today that we forget how far we have come. You know, to think that there were 1,000 girls, 50 pregnant in 2018. And I remember those days when our systems were very different. They were overwhelmed. That was back in the day when the state had CYA. And so when you really think about it, in a very short period of time, we have, probably led by LA County, care... of time, we have probably led by LA County, care first, really transformed the way juveniles are seen and treated statewide. And so thank you for that. We should, you know, while we get, it's not about, you know, we rest on those laurels, but we are in a very different place than we were in that very recent history, and that's a good thing. We have built an entire infrastructure of community-based organizations that didn't exist, because kids went to, from the halls to Youth Authority, and they were written off in a profound way. I will say, and it never ceases to amaze me, that the kinds of things we're talking about today are not new. And I don't know why the collective we, again, can't figure this out. I just, it, I don't know why. It is so hard for us to fix it. So that, you know, those are the things that wake me up at 3:00 in the morning. And I'm glad to hear multiple departments here acknowledging that it is all of us, because I hope the clear message all of our departments are hearing from this board is, every adult, whether you get a check from Health Services, County Office of Education, or probation, that is in a carceral setting where juveniles are, we, the board, the policy-setting entity, have an expectation, because they, those children belong to all of us. And so we are expecting that they be treated accordingly, like our children. And so I hope that that is a consistent message that all the people who work for the county, who work in those spaces, understand. Thank you to my colleagues. I had a lot of similar questions. I want to talk a little bit about something that came up in the Probation Oversight Committee meeting very recently, that's talking about the roles that deputy probation officers play in their communication with the courts on behalf of our youth, either in the recommendations they provide the court, or the various reports they're responsible for completing, the supervisors sign off on. And a couple of things, you know, those reports should be objective, not subjective. So I want to know that we have a high level of confidence that they are indeed objective. And like, how do we know that? What's that review process? And then, secondly, if, if, if the court provides feedback on the quality of those reports, and if so, how was that addressed? And I'm really speaking more systemically versus kind of on an individual, you know, DPO basis.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor for raising that. Yesterday, Director Suzanne Lyles from our Juvenile Field Services went into, I think, quite a bit of detail on what that looks like and how that happens, all the way back to citing the legislation in 2023 that was requiring the updated training for all of our probation officers to understand the criteria required in those reports. And I think there's always room for improvement, and I think we're open to going back and looking at how we can continue to have ongoing and continuous training. That was something that was asked of us through the POC to do, and go back and revisit that. The sampling of the reports that were cited by our director was very few that were brought back to us by the court for a review. And, but again, those are the only, basically anecdotal stories that she was able to tell about that. But we were very open to listening to what the POC was raising on those transfer motions, and what they look like, and the importance of it being objective, and the quality behind those reports in support of those transfer motions, because they're very serious.
And, and I'm assuming that it's not an issue in terms of quantity that DPOs are doing that, they're providing those reports to the courts? Or should I not assume that?
Um, no, we shouldn't assume. Part of the strain on the system has been having sufficient DPO2s to produce timely reports. And our own assessment has determined that we're missing the mark on too many occasions on providing timely reports to the court. And to that end, you know, we recently restructured, and we have a deputy director now over specifically court offices, so court services, and juvenile supervision. So we've internally, this is very recent, restructured, to give more attention to this issue, to make sure that they're getting the resources. But because of the pull to the juvenile halls, a lot of these have been done on overtime, and something's always lost when you have too much overtime being utilized. Quality suffers. And so to that, and that's why we've done some of the restructuring. I will say, quality's always an issue. When it comes, you know, one of the main functions of probation is to be a neutral party to the court. But the public defender and the district attorney are represented for those interests of the people and for, but what we do is give independent and neutral information to the court. And to that end, no reports go without a supervisor signature. And now we've added another layer where we're going to be doing sort of these partial reviews to make sure that we're not missing the mark. But what I will say is we are stressed in terms of having sufficient probation officers to do this at a better pace. That is absolutely true. And really, it's the dedication of our court officers and our report officers, that they do overtime specifically to make sure that those go in. But I, no, this is an area of improvement in terms of the services that we provide the court. We have a commitment to them to do better in this area. And by the way, I just want to mention, because I've seen examples, where we miss the mark, we miss the mark in both directions. We miss the mark on sometimes probation officers becoming advocates for a particular outcome for a young person, when in reality, the facts are what should be presented. And then we miss the mark when a young person is violent within the facility, and we oversell. I think this new structure is going to help make sure that we're...
That it's truly objective.
That it's truly objective.
And it's balanced. I appreciate that. One last question for me. Madam Chair, I often ask about population, you know, decreasing. And I'm clear that some of that is outside of your control. So, and I know that we've had an increase in some areas. So I'm wondering what probation is doing within the department, your own control, to reduce population?
One of the things that I want to cite, that the chief asked us to do in accordance with that direction and question Supervisor, is placement, and community placement and SYTF run a little separately. Our placement runs out of our Juvenile Field Services and SYTF out of Berry J. The chief asked for a strategy to have a single point of contact overseen, both in the way of communication, like what are we doing to place a sense of urgency in these areas, and not wait, and not delay, and not get in our own way with it. So rather than, you know, opposing ourselves and delaying these things, we have a single point of contact now, as the acting chief deputy of our operations reports to me on those numbers weekly, and I give those updates to the chief. So I think it's definitely a great strategy going forward for us.
Got it. Mr. Carroll, I see you've joined the table. Do you have something to offer?
Just wanted to highlight that in conjunction, in partnership with probation, the bench, the defense attorneys, and the DA, there are multiple initiatives taking place. One, DYD is co-located in the Inglewood Courthouse currently, working with young people to provide opportunities to not go into Los Pedrinos and go into the care of the RAY program instead, specifically young people that are in competency court, Judge Espinoza's court. So did want to highlight that partnership. Also, earlier, when you all were mentioning the girls and gender expansive youth, there are 17 girls that, again, in partnership with probation, the bench, the DA, the defense attorneys, their situations are being reviewed for potential release, either to a CBO, a third-party CBO, or to the RAY program, as a potential. Those particular young people are primarily in custody because of violations to, in community custody requirements. So there are some things that are taking place in partnership with probation, but with multiple other partners.
And are we, and are those CBOs in a position to kind of expand? Can we grow those numbers? Can capacity?
Resources are a concern. Resources are a concern, just to be 100% honest. We are almost...
You mean resources as in budgets in DYD or probation to pay for those beds? When you say resources, what does that mean?
Well, a little bit of everything. So budgets to pay, so the RAY program isn't beds, it's wraparound services where they're living in community. So we had 400 openings. We are almost at capacity, and we're not even eight months into the program. So we do think that there are some resources we can move around and add some new slots as of January upcoming.
Not beds, but they're...
Those are wraparound services, that the court has been willing to release young people into the care, and use that as a condition of release in some cases.
Got it.
Not to sort of be the bearer of bad news, or be sobering here, but, you know, probation has all but been removed in the true prevention work at this point. And when I think of traditional probation and engaging young people at schools, and in communities, and as the kids of those that are in the system, all of the things that we know have probably a greater effect down the line, either by, you know, policy decisions, or by resources, we've all been removed from that piece, and it's not until they're actually tapped to enter the system that we participate.
That is fair, and I would say accurate. I agree. That is kind of where we are. Thank you very much, all of you, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you all. We are now going to thank you all for everything. Will you now call those members of the public that would wish to talk on these items?
Will the following individuals please come forward, and staff will assist you? Amil Baldwin, Angela Arroyo, Brian J., Brianna Avalos, Bryce Bonas, Byron Jose, Conchita Bunkers, Deanna Pittman, Evelyn Espinal, Jasra H., Jorge Garcia, Cassidy Maldonado, Natalie Segura, Nahimir Bradford, Olivia Shields, Tadida Shakur, and Paula Rodriguez. As a final reminder for remote participants, to be placed in the speaking queue to address items 70, 71, and 72, if you have not already done so, use the raise hand feature on your device, or press star three on your telephone now. Caller, your line is open. Please state your name and begin.
Hello, I'm Watson Dix. A couple of things. What is the current ratio as far as officers and the youth? I'm glad to hear about, I'm glad the chief presented the information about the programs. It's a very adverse response to the very aggressive attack from last meeting about the program individuals. So I'm glad to hear that the youth are getting their programs. Do the CBOs participate for free, or are they paid? And we last heard a lot about recruitment, but any information we given about retention would be nice to know. It seems like the department is getting a lot top-heavy. Does LACO require non-detained students to wear polos? And how do they handle food in the classrooms in the community? And then lastly, I've noticed that other departments are intertwined into probation discussion. I think it'd be more, it would be better to have them separated, so we can offer more time for respective departments like DMA, DYD, LACO. That's all I have. Thank you all, and have a great rest of the day.
Thank you. Roy Humphries, your line is open. Please begin.
For the persons that are trying to do the thing, but they have not got the resources. And probation has structural deficits going back decades. These juveniles are not your kids, and should not be treated as such. These juveniles are not there because they are angels. You should be focused on the many and not the few. You have not got the resources to perform in a timely, decisive manner. I am calling for receivership, so that we can get all the resources necessary to end this never-ending horror story. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with phone number 323-884, your line is open. Please state your name and begin.
Yes, this is Dr. Critical Truth Bay. I wanted to say thank you for those who presented concerning the arts programs, the music, and good stuff. But I appreciate even more Janice Han, District Four, in calling out, when it's not jiving, it's not jiving. What you're presenting today, and what is actually the youth are receiving, are two different things. We have so many resources for us, and it would be nice if these programs that you just stated are actually applied, not pending, or not probably, but actually active with the youth. And we have a significant change in mental health. And this ties in directly with the homeless agency, juvenile detention. It's ran with the same attitude. This is why it's a revolving circle concerning these young people who eventually become troubled adults, because it's not...
Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers to address the board. Remote participation for items 70, 71, and 72 is now concluded. We will go to our in-person speakers. Please begin.
Hi, my name is Amil Baldwin, with Sister Warriors Freedom Coalition, from District Two. Right now, the kids in the juvenile halls and camps aren't getting the education they should. They're getting moved around too much. The classes are boring and outdated, and instead of helping them, the system is just suspending them. That doesn't fix anything. It just makes their situation worse. Young people deserve an education that actually meet their needs, individualized learning, wellness supports, leadership opportunities, and clear paths for change. These youth already go through a lot. They need real support, not more punishment. They need teachers and programs that understands what they're dealing with, and they need a stable plan when they come home, so they don't fall behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Royal, here with YWFC. The lack of adequate education in the juvenile detention system deprives young people of the fundamental tools they need to rebuild their lives. When educational programs are inconsistent, underfunded, or inaccessible, detained youth fall further behind, limiting future opportunities. Ensuring meaningful, high-quality education within these facilities is not just an academic issue. It's a critical investment in rehabilitation, public safety, and long-term well-being of our communities. Please pass this motion. Thank you. Free the 50.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Conchita Bunkers, from Sister Warrior Freedom Coalition, District One. Firmly incarcerated girls and gender expansive youth have demonstrated self-determination and educational success at New Village Girls Academy, an all-girls school with variety of classes to help individualize their learning, and helps provide alternative to incarceration with internships, wellness programs, and how to become a leader within theirselves and our community. Free the 50 to give the opportunity to fulfill their goals and attend the New Village Girl Academy, to help theirself make a solid foundation when they come home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Brianna Avalos. I live in District 10. I'm here to express my strong support for Agenda Item 40. I recently did over a year at camp. Suspension rate are a part of the problem. The youth receive engagement which led to them being labeled as a shelter or unsuitable. LACO cannot be the only option. I graduated early, but there are other youths that haven't been able to graduate because of their difficulties retaining the information.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Evelyn. I live in District Two. I'm here to discuss the rise of suspensions for incarcerated youth inside juvenile halls and camp schools. LACO cannot stand as the only option. We must prioritize educational methods that adopt to the needs and realities of the youth. It is time to place importance on girls and gender expansive youth. We are the alternative. We can no longer wait. Please release the youth to provide them the chance to continue their development outside the facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Deanna. I live in District Two, and I'm here with the Young Women's Freedom Center. The conditions that youth are enduring inside the juvenile halls are concerning, especially inside of the schools. Probation has a long and troubling history of not being able to meet the fundamental rights of youth inside their institutions. And when it comes to education, as folks have mentioned already, LACO cannot be the only option. We should be investing in alternative modes of learning. But also, I would be remiss to not mention that carceral settings are inherently counterproductive to the process of learning. How can you focus on school when your guard has to be up 24/7? How can you focus on school when you have to live in an institution where the conditions are substandard? The issues are systemic, and they predate anyone on this board, but y'all really do have the power to create change for these youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Byron Jose, with Transatlantic Coalition and Reimagine LA. Thank you Supervisor Horvath for all your work last year as the chair to move... Thank you Supervisor Horpeth for all your work last year as the chair to move forward, expediting this resources, this care coordination, and this trust of messengers for our youth. We now need to move to depopulation and decarceration. Thank you Supervisor Mitchell for all your, always highlighting our community needs throughout your time at the board and working with Supervisor Hahn and the rest of the board to move this. It can be very hard for young people to focus when the gladiator fighting masters are in the room with them. So let's be real about that part. And we're spending all this time talking about like these adults, why did gamer run out the door? So let's focus on the staff that are getting paid instead of just putting the burden on the young people that can time and time again continue to be traumatized, and then therefore the CEO and our county council is going to pay out all the liability lawsuits. So we want to make sure you listen to the youth and you listen to our voices because I'm tired. They should not get to the point of being tired of coming here and you not listening to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Natalie Segura. I'm a fellow at the U justice Coalition. I'm here today to say that LA County should be investing in our youth instead of locking up our youth. Brian Diaz overdosed two years ago while being in custody. It's just crazy how the LA County brainwashed our older generation into thinking our youth are safe in the hands of probation, probation officers, when they can't even show up to work and actually say, and supposedly say they do. Never in my life have I heard a young person say I'm better off in the juvenile halls. Probation are just keeping our future success hostage. Instead of focusing on beautifying these facilities, we should prioritize freeing our young people from a system that causes more trauma. Students deserve agency in creating solutions that foster a positive educational environment. There should be a clear avenue for students who provide feedback and provide support to implement programming in school climate changes.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good morning. My name is George Garcia, and I'm a YJC. I'm here to speak about your budget and why you should be investing your money in our youth, because a lot of our youth need resources like mental health and anger management classes, more community centers like Youth Justice Coalition. We need funding to expand all these community centers that help. Also, more programs to keep kids motivated and educated for their future, for school, more free internet, because not a lot of youth have that, and a solution to address that should be accessible and not trauma-informed to create positive outcomes. We must acknowledge that youth are navigating past and current trauma according to LACO. At least one-third of the youth inside the halls have learning and other disabilities, and we must help them for, in order for them to have a successful future and not cause more harm. We can support them and see growth and change in themselves with addressing the root of the issue. Suspension will only not be a support for that young person, but will continue to be pushed out instead of pulled in. Invest in the heart of the YGR for this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Tatar Shakur, and I am with Youth Justice Coalition. Parents are fine when their kids are late or miss school, yet the probation, yet the probation department moves youth around like musical chairs. Sending girls to Camp Kilpatrick without enough staff to keep them safe. No hall and camp is safe for young people. And if you aren't willing to do the right thing by shutting down these halls and freeing the young people you've trapped in these barbaric facilities, then at the very least, give them real access to education. Youth deserves stability and schooling in their communities. The Youth Justice Coalition has a fully operational high school, ready to serve them, keeping them safe, supportive in learning. As Nelson Mandela said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." Let's stop punishing parents and destabilizing youth, and instead, give young people the education, dignity, and freedom that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Nehemiah Bradford, firmly incarcerated, and I live in District 2. I'm here to express my strong support, which addresses the rise of suspensions for incarcerated youth inside juvenile hall and camp schools. I wanted to speak today because I feel like you are hearing guns, but no one is actually listening. I experienced both mental and physical abuse in the halls and camps. I never learned anything as simple as when the war started and ended. I think if you are going to make youth do time for crimes committed, then you should at least try to support their education rather than contribute to their downfall. You must stop, think, and truly listen to what's going on in your facilities or simply let the youth go, meaning Free the Fifty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Bryce, and I live in District 2. I'm here to express my strong support, which addresses the rise of suspicions for incarcerated youth inside juvenile halls and camp schools. Youth educational, youth educational needs can be met in the community, not in jail, because that's not a space where you can focus your head at. But sending young ladies to New Village Girls Academy that provides individualized learning and an alternative to incarceration with internships can offer girls a better chance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Cassidy Maldonado. I'm coming from YWFC. I live in District 1. Probation department is playing musical chairs with the youth during the difficult time in their lives. And it's causing instability in their education. They doesn't receive the proper education, and when they are, when they are ready to go to the ward, they are not ready to start because they are really behind, really behind because of negligence from the system. It's your responsibility to provide proper education in the facilities with proper people.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Paola. I live in District 2. I'm here from the Young Women's Center, and I support Item 14. The suspicious insight won't part of the problem of the education that they don't, they don't get insight is boring. The teacher should give them more help to the student so they can get their credit before they graduate and done with school. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Olivia Shields with Urban Peace Institute and LAU uprising Coalition. I'm here today in collaboration with Hoops for Justice on behalf of youth incarcerated in Units R1 and R2 in Los Pedrinos. I have their posters here today and was told I can't hold them up, so I'll be reading what's said on them instead. It's imperative that we always include incarcerated youth voices in decisions that impact them. These bright, capable individuals know exactly what they need to succeed. A key part of today's discussion was laid to education, so I'll be sharing their words on the topic. R1 believes that education is the best deterrent to crime. The following changes would improve education here at Los Pedrinos Juvenile Hall. Less school suspensions because they don't work and they keep us from school. More qualified teachers, counselors who keep students on track from their credits and classes. More classes that prepare us for reentry. Financial literacy, housing, employment, trades, life skills, physical education. Allowing access to library at least once a week. Better school environment. Actual teachers who are present in class. More computer access to work on school assignments and turn them in on time. Access to school textbooks. More class options. More variety of class subjects. Longer school hours for college courses.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Olivia. And thanks, Hoops for Justice. And you know, the last time you wrote that poster was a year ago, and I, there were 10 asks, and I think I only accomplished one, so I got a long way to go with these new asks, but thank you.
Please begin.
My name is Jazra Holliday from Youth Justice Coalition, firmly incarcerated. My speech is in collaboration with Olivia Shields. So R2 public comment allows our voices to be heard and makes us feel like we matter. Here are a few things that we would like to improve. The education system at Los Pedrinos Juvenile Hall. High schools should have access to school computers. We need better class structure, dedicated periods for each class subject, more teacher, more teacher interactions with the students regarding academic studies, having more tutors during and after school hours, rewards, and incentive programs for doing well in school trade schools, auto carpentry, construction, intervention for being suspended or before suspension counseling, restructures, and et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes public comment on these items. These reports will be received and filed.